I'll call this meeting to order. This is a meeting, this meeting tonight will be conducted in person in Sanford City Council Chambers and via remote video and teleconference. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing 1-929-205-6099 using meeting ID 867-0735-7023 and pass code 061408 or via computer at the link provided. Members of the public may also submit comments via the City of Sanford's website at www.sanfordmain.org. So tonight is a public hearing that's being held specific to the franchise agreement renewal as being requested by Breeze Line. As a bit of history, the Breeze Line, Breeze Line currently holds a franchise agreement with the city for cable TV, cable TV franchise. The current franchise expires on July 31st, 2026. Current franchise was granted to MetroCast, then sold to Atlantic Broadband in 2018 and subsequently is held by Breeze Line back in January of 2022. Franchise agreement was initiated and active on August 1st, 2016. It was a 15-year period. The purpose of the public hearing is being held pursuant to notification sent by Breeze Line on August 17th of '23 notifying the city, the franchisee, that pursuant to the Cable Television Consumer Protection Act of 1992, Section 626A, it desired to enter into the informal review period being 36 months out from the end of the franchise. City responded within a six-month window in reference to the Cable Act 546A1 for the purposes of identifying the city's future cable-related community needs and interests, and that's why we're here this evening, and reviewing the performance of the franchise under the franchise during the current franchise term, again, which ends July 31st, 2016. So again, for this evening, we have members online, we have members of the public here. For all of the people concerned this evening, this is your opportunity to express your experiences as a user of Breeze Line services for cable TV related to the franchise agreement, thereby providing the city with information that will be taken under consideration in seeking a renewal franchise agreement with Breeze Line. This is not a question-and-answer forum, so we're seeking your input at this point in time. For those of you that are here in person, if you would, when you have the opportunity, if you would please come to the podium, state your name and place of residence, then clearly state your experience, concerns, or positive support of Breeze Line services for the record. For those that are on Zoom, please raise your hand using the reactions key, and you will be called upon to make your statements. Please also state your name and place of residence at time of doing so. Please be mindful of our time and make your comments as concise as possible. All comments made tonight will be documented for the record. And aside from people that are here by Zoom and/or in the audience this evening, I do have a collection of comments that were sent in electronically, online, in the various formats. So that being said, I would open up the floor now for anybody that wants to come forward and express their interest as far as Breeze Line is concerned.
My name is Nancy Fuller. I live at 42 Mill Street in Springvale, Maine. My cable has been out since April 4th. My TV has not worked, and my internet has not worked. We have called at least twice a day. Yes, we're going to come fix it. In fact, they said they would be there today to fix it. The day's over, but I haven't got TV or internet yet. And since the world seems to work on internet nowadays, I think that's very irresponsible. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak this evening?
Hello. My name's David S. LaHoo. I'm from South Sanford. And first of all, I'd like to reference the bill, and we had switched over from Breeze Line to, or from the MetroCast to Breeze Line, and that was just last year. And we started off with like the 225 package with the intentions that it was supposed to go up after the promo was over to like 250. And right now, it's at $316.23 a month. And we're not understanding why there's another $65 added on to the bill. And another thing is that over the course of the winter, we've had some car crashes down in our area, and the telephone poles have been changed and the wires that are on them have been moved. But I asked the power guys, what about these other cables that are just hanging and not attached to the poles, and one's on a broken pole, just sort of supported by the two guy wires that are holding it up? Otherwise, it would just be on the ground at the corner of Pinewood Drive and Route 109. And they said it was the cable company's issue because they don't do cable, they only do power. And I know one of them's been there since last fall, just dangling. And it even had a piece of telephone pole hanging on it until it finally just fell off over the winter. And the other one was probably, I don't know, what, six weeks ago or so, when a truck hit the telephone pole on the corner of that street. And the power guys came right over and moved those cables up onto the new pole, but the communications cable is still just dangling on that pole because at some point, I expect that pole to collapse and just lay on the road, when all they had to do is come down and address that communication cable, attach it to the new pole on the corner, and then they could get rid of the broken one that's just kind of caught there. Thank you very much. Want to comment about the death circle on the TV. Sometimes it's just relentless, and it always has a video loading written on the screen, and it's popping on and off, and sometimes it's like, you know, every two or three minutes, you lose your channel and you're forever waiting for it to come back on. And other times, it seems to be working really good. And, you know, it seems like somebody in Control Central has a dial where they could turn up the power of your internet because the squeaky wheel gets to grease, and other times, it just seems like for no reason at all, it just doesn't perform very well at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak tonight?
Hi, Moira Hurley from Sanford. I did get something, this is related to my great aunt, but she tried to register online, but the internet is slow. Anyway, oh, no, this is, my cousin was saying that she was trying to register to speak online, I think. Anyway, wanted to tell someone about Breeze Line. They told my mother she could get her bill for TV reduced by taking an internet promotion, and she could cancel at the end. Well, she just tried to cancel and was told they don't have just TV anymore, which was a big issue for the city that they allowed just TV for seniors. You have to have the internet also. She doesn't have a computer, she's 96, trust me, she is not a computer person, she is my aunt. She does, they now tell her she is grandfathered because, that she thought she was grandfathered, but they told her because she's no lo, because she took the promotion, she's no longer grandfathered for TV only. But she was never warned that she would lose that TV-only option when they offered the promotion. And my cousin commented at the end, "Poor way to run a business, in my opinion." Thank you for listening.
Anyone else wish to comment?
Good evening, everybody. Hello, my name is Patricia Vera. I live at 35 Pierce Avenue, South Sanford, down by the airport. Just wanted to make a comment. We've been a resident of Sanford for many years, and we have gone through, we've stuck with, we went through the Atlantic Broadband and MetroCast, and once they switched over to Breeze Line. Years ago, when both, my sister Diana's here, our mother, we had, before she's deceased now, and for the longest time, a senior citizen, she, we were on a package that they would give her a discount. Then all of a sudden, they said that they weren't going to give her a discount because they weren't offering, going back to the senior citizen discounts and things like that, they weren't offering because she was no longer eligible, I said, but she was still a senior citizen, so. And that was kind of like, just abruptly how that switched over. And then now going to the Breeze Line company, there's been, going back to what Dave was saying before about how the bill has astronomically gone up, I mean, our monthly charges have gone way high just after this current issue of power losses, loss. I mean, we've lost power for a day or two, and, and, and there's been no compensation as far as like deduction off the bill or anything like that, when you don't have any power for two days and no internet or things like that, there's, I, there's been just an issue of just their customer service has been lapsed. We had an event that, granted, I understand there were a lot of lines that were down during this past storm, and it turned out that we had a line that was coming down, it landed on top of my vehicle. So I got the snow off it, they did come, and they repaired it, and then next thing, the line was down again. So they didn't really attach it properly the first time to the house, so it wouldn't have happened the second time. But that was taken care of, but the, the cost of the bill with phone and internet, we have just basic cable. Now, all the time, you get monthly charges that come up on here, and the, the actual, you know, what we get for, the information for the channels that are available to us, it's not like we get an astronomical amount of, of channels and things like that, but there are times that, I think Dave was mentioning, that all of a sudden, you get different bleeps and things like that on the, the cable network, and it goes out, and it says, goes to video, and then we have to reset our TV. So, but there's just been one thing after another with the unsatisfactory issue with different things that are going on in Breeze Line. Their monthly charges and stuff, ours is like, right now, we can only afford paying like half the bill at a time because of just overall cost of things. It just seems like that on the other side of the road where we live, they have a different cable network, and I've spoken to the people in that area, and they're saying, "Why are you paying so much for this basics, basic stuff?" And we can't get that different cable issue, a different company, because they're just right across 99. So it just seems like a kind of odd why we're not able to get, they're just, you know, within a miles difference, to be able to access this, a full more affordable company that I've heard other people that I've worked with and things like that, that could make it much more affordable for us, so. I just see that, it just seems like the, the company, their expense has gone up, like, not just monthly, but yearly, monthly, and it, we would love the opportunity to be able to look into a different, something different that would be more affordable for us, and something that, it just, it seems like there's stuff out there that would be a lot more beneficial to us as far as just the internets, because sometimes we have the different little router things throughout the house to increase the internet, and sometimes different places in the house, you can't get stuff. So it, there's a, there's just so much, I could be here a lot longer, but it, it just seems like we would like the opportunity to maybe look into something else with getting the same benefits that we are now, and it's like, we're not getting that extraordinary things as cable and a fast internet. We still have a landline phone. We've had one ever since we lived up here in Maine. I choose, we choose to have it because it was our mother's, and we keep that because that, the landline is more dependable than anything during power outages, that is, it's cord, it's got a cord, and it's an old desk phone, so we've kept the same number ever since we've lived in Maine, and we, we're going to continue keeping that number. But the internet, when that goes out, you're basically out of luck on certain things, so we're glad to have that, and thank you for your time, and take care, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present here this evening that wishes to speak? Okay. If not, we'll pause for just a moment. Ms. Connelly, we have you online.
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
We can.
My name is Diane Connelly, I'm a Springvale resident. I remember having cable when Shaw's used to run it before MetroCast. And there's, just, I'll just give you a brief rundown. This past March, we, we cut the cord, we got rid of it, and there was various reasons why. First of all, the insulators up on the lines, up on the poles were constantly getting wet and interfering with their signals, not getting signal on the TV, losing signal, I lost my phone because of it, our landline. We still keep our landline because we do, we're in that 2% in the valley where the tower doesn't reach us, so we have to have a landline. Now we're losing that because they, the interference with the insulators and the cutting out on what they call rhymes, on how many rhymes that we have on the, on the house running. We had to get a Wi-Fi extender, Wi-Fi was cutting out. This is all within the last two years. The last straw for us came March, sorry, February 14th of this year. Mr. Buck, I'm sure you're well aware of the tree incident, came down in our driveway, ripped the car, the, all the lines from the house except for the power, including the Breeze Line power line. It took them a week and a half to come out here and reconnect and put that back up and get us back online. We had phoned the same day it happened, they finally come out a week and a half later, and then a month later, we get a phone call, and they're here at our front door saying, "We're here to put the line back up." Hello, it's already up back on the house. There's six-month promotions, we're constantly being upgraded, the prices going up, up, up. Oh, if you have a problem with the bill, please talk to our retention officer. Well, you know, it gets a little tiresome every six months talking to someone and telling them that, you know, we're paying $30 plus in fees, and I don't even understand except for the 911 fee, which is, I'm all, great, fine, I'll pay for that, no problem. But to have them explain to me and everyone else what all these fees are for is just ridiculous, and that keeps, it's like every six months, they keep adding a new fee here. To get them on the phone is next to impossible, you have to be constantly waiting for over an hour. No thanks, don't need it, and I think the city, in my opinion, should drop them. Thank you very much for your time, sir. Have a good evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else online that would like to speak this evening? Okay, not at this point in time. So at this point in time, I can give you a summation of what we received electronically. Just a moment, please. Our communications coordinator in advertising the meeting, and I'll provide copies of this to, to Breeze Line, the Breeze Line representative that's here this evening. We received 81 comments electronically via the online format, some of which are extensive, some of which are very short and brief, so I'm not going to read all of these 81 comments into the record here this evening, but our communication coordinator did give me a summary of what she gleaned from those. So I'll read this statement, "That there is a clear divide in opinions regarding Breeze Line service, with some customers expressing satisfaction and others voicing frustration and disappointment. Most of the commenter, commenters, approximately two-thirds, express dissatisfaction with Breeze Line services, particularly highlighting issues with pricing." And let me, let me say this evening, pricing is not something that the city can discuss, or we don't drive that as far as the franchise agreement, that's, that's a competitive realm for the franchisee. So highlighting issues with pricing, reliability, customer service, equipment quality. Comments also suggested that many residents perceive Breeze Line's prices as unreasonably high. Has also highlighted frustrations with frequent, frequent outages, difficulty in contacting customer support, and dissatisfaction with the equipment being provided. Pros mentioned by a few commenters include relatively stable service, so that contradicts the others, helpful customer service experiences for some, and the need for competition to keep prices in check. However, these positive comments are outweighed by the negative feedback. Cons overwhelmingly, again, include high pricing, unreliable service, poor customer service experiences, and dissatisfaction with equipment provided. So just taking from some of those highlights, as far as price and cost, again, that's not the driver in negotiating the renewal. But they, they stated, this same person stated, "Very hard to get a hold of, our internet goes out all of the time, even when the weather is fine. Anytime we can get a hold of someone, they're rude." I could go on. A lot of other comments about price. Service reliability and quality comments were summarized as, they made a comment, "Breeze Line is terrible and very unreliable, in my opinion. Breeze Line customer support with unplug it and plug it back in was their highest, was the highest tier of help they would provide, didn't cut in with a weekly outage." Another one said, "We changed our service provider because Breeze Line had way too much blackouts and the equipment would fail and make internet slower than what I'm paying for." As far as customer service, we had Breeze Line since they were originally MetroCast. When they were MetroCast, we never had an issue with their service, it was great. When they switched to Atlantic Broadband, eventually Breeze Line, it seemed the quality of their service went down and many issues arose. Once the Breeze Line office left Springvale, we no longer had direct access to fair, a fair majority of their services. It almost felt like they lost touch with the City of Sanford itself. Getting a hold of them for anything was a waste of time, and most times, it ended with, well, that seems to be a you problem. Another comment, "I don't notice many interruptions, but the price is ridiculous. The customer service was not very friendly as well." Another individual commented, "I had connection, I had bad connection frequently, my devices wouldn't connect with any of the top Wi-Fi packages. I have a right, I live right downtown Sanford, and there's no reason why it's so spotty and unreliable. Customer service promised to, to help multiple times and did nothing, I had no communication since." Equipment quality is another category, there's many comments under that. The equipment they offer to rent is problematic, often causing internet outages and requiring Another extensive comment is that the hardware, hardware is garbage. "I pay for a boatload for the best service, and the modem they gave me isn't appropriate for the speed I pay for. You're better off buying your own wireless modem and/or router." Other opposing comments, "We had Breeze Line since they were originally MetroCast. When they were MetroCast, we never had an issue in the service, it was great." Again, they, they comment about when, when the switch was made from, to Atlantic Broadband, and eventually to Breeze Line, the quality of service was, was depleted. Another comment was that service was terrible, always losing service, speed test of internet never matched what I, what I had in my plan. Had a line down in our yard that was Breeze Line, it took them two weeks to come out and repair. The service Breeze Line offered was terrible, internet was always going down. Breeze Line is the worst ISP I've ever used, always cutting out for no reason, never got the speed advertised paid for, and again, complaints about price. On the positive side, there were supporting comments. This individual wrote, "We love Breeze Line. My husband and I both work from home in tech, and this internet has been the best we've ever had. Outages are few, keep the price level, and whatever we have, whenever we have an issue, it is fixed promptly. In the past, we had had other providers, but they're very satisfied with their current Breeze Line services." They further stated that they have had Breeze Line for three years and have never had a substantial rate change, if any. I strongly support the renewal of this contract, and I'm hoping that the Sanford City Council agrees. Another positive comment, "Our house utilizes Breeze Line's fastest internet for our area. While their wait times are high, we have only had an outage three times this year due to circumstances out of their control. Otherwise, speed has been consistent, and we are able to game, stream movies, stream music, and complete office work at the same time without a lag in speed for a household of seven." Another positive comment is that I have had, I have Breeze Line and haven't had any issues. Again, price, they think is high, but they will try to help you if you call. Another positive comment is they use Breeze Line in their office for phones and internet. They're happy with the cost and the service. I believe all residents and businesses should have a choice if they want Breeze Line or another provider or fiber. To not renew the franchise would take away from those options, so they support obviously the renewal as well. Another positive comment, "It works just fine for our plan. It is, it is the lowest-cost internet, works well for our household. In the four-plus years of having them, there's only been outages due to weather, and even with that, it wasn't too long before it was back in service." All right, okay, so there's, that's kind of a quick summary that came out of the 81 comments, and I'll provide a copy, copy of all of those to Breeze Line themselves. I have two letters that were submitted by the Sanford Housing Authority. This is from the deputy director here at the Housing Authority. "In, in that person's role, they oversee many functions relating to the projects and tenants and supervise the occupancy, specialists on staff. They are acutely aware of some of the difficulties our tenants have experienced utilizing Breeze Line." The summation on that is, and I'll provide the full letter. Bundling, so this is a reoccurring theme, the bundling of Wi-Fi internet with a basic cable TV package. So the city has communicated that same concern. A couple of years ago, our attorney wrote that letter expressing the concern. Atlantic Broadband had a response back to that for the reasons that they, you know, the city can't choose the technology, can't impress upon them the technology that they use to transfer the multichannel TV package. That being said, I still think there is a reasonable concern, that we hear that expressed consistently, that especially the seniors, I will categorize it that way, the seniors and certain individuals, they want that basic tier package without the internet, and that the basic offering for them now is anywhere from $120 to $150, which they deem as being Residents have expressed difficulty getting a response over the phone as far as fix of their equipment and/or change of services. Again, further comments about the price bundled package of being $150 or more is unaffordable for the basic tier. And then issues expressed as far as correct billing, so inaccuracy as far as the billing was concerned, and the inability to get that reconciled via the phone. Also, in the second letter from the Housing Authority, they expressed that they used to purchase bulk cable and then distribute that to their clients inside. Three years ago, they stopped that practice as internet is now being purchased by another provider. And again, they expressed that the clients are now seeking cable TV only, and again, they quoted a price of $120 to $150 for that basic tier cable TV service. Again, because that's bundled with the internet. Again, because that's bundled with the internet. So I'll offer those into the public record. Also, for past correspondence that the city has had, again, I referenced the bundling. We submitted, our attorney submitted a letter to Breeze Line as far as the bundling of services for the basic tier. Our attorney made an argument that they felt that that was in violation of the Cable TV Act. Very strong response back from Breeze Line that that was not a violation because Breeze Line complies with the Communications Act's requirements. The section does not apply to Breeze Line's deregulated systems, system. And the city has no authority to control Breeze Line's transmission technology. So that's the earlier reference to the use of the internet to transmit that technology versus more traditional cable, coax cable. Also from our Public Works Director, we have communications whereby he was recently working with all of, this was December of '22, '23. Working with all of the entities that have various cables, wires, and services on the joint-owned poles. He was seeking to do a cleanup, as was talked about here earlier, a cleanup of all of the utility lines on all of the poles in the city. There's a lot of hanging poles and hanging wires and such under that. He had good response from a multitude of the providers that are on those various poles. And Breeze Line did not respond to his request for communications. One of the oldest that I still have here in the file is from October 8th of 2020. City had communications about the loss of the French Channel. We deemed that as being beyond the control of MetroCast, that the provider of that French-speaking channel was no longer going to provide that, nor was there any other alternative for that at that point in time. So we had communications with him about that. Surprised nobody spoke out about that tonight, but I know that's been an issue in the past that the people of the French-speaking heritage still would like to have that programming if it ever should become available again. And then we had quite a bit of communication about the customer support. And we cited the specific areas within the cable, the current cable franchise agreement. It talks about the customer support, the specific section, because it cites back to the Cable TV Act and the specific sections in there, and notes for the time period that connectivity for a customer representative should be met. And the time to transfer that call, once, once the connection has been made. And that that standard has to be met by more than 90% of the time. We have not found that that has been consistent. And then the last issue was the service interruption. So there's a definition of that in the service agreement. And that was something that was noted quite a bit this evening as well. So that's what I had as far as the city's records that we gleaned online via this process, possibly we've submitted in the past. Is there anybody else online that wants to speak at this point in time? Chris Hayward, are you able to turn your mic on and speak to us this evening? Chris, as you're trying to resolve that, I'll move forward. Is there anybody else here in the audience tonight that wishes to speak at the podium at this point in time? No? Okay. Okay. So at this point in time, we will document the public input that we have. And that will be taken into consideration as we continue to move forward on the anticipated renewal of the Breeze Line franchise agreement here with the city. We have about two and a half years left to negotiate and discuss that with the franchisee. So at this point in time, I will close the public hearing. We'll gather all of this documentation. I'm going to submit everything that I've referenced to Breeze Line here this evening. We'll have minutes this evening. This, this hearing tonight is preserved on Town Hall Streams where people can access that at a later point in time. And if there's no further comment, I will close the hearing.
Steve?
Oh?
Steve, it's Fran.
Yes, Mr. Bradley.
I just wanted to thank you for, you know, putting this meeting together and giving us an opportunity to be able to hear some of the comments from some of your residents. I know that our Regional Director of Operations is there in attendance and I'm sure has noted all of those. And anything that was involving any kind of service issues, you know, we will certainly take back and get resolved. And I, I look forward to, to receiving the listing of the issues sent into you electronically. That way, we can go through those, have our people take a look at them and possibly be able to give you some responses back also. Because it is our goal to be the best provider of all three of the services that we provide, internet, telephony, and video. And we want to be a partner with the city and look forward to a long-lasting relationship. So, thank you, sir.
I appreciate that very much. Fran Bradley is, if I get your title correct, Fran, you're Head of Governmental Relations, is that correct?
I'm the Director of Government Affairs, correct, sir.
Yes. So Fran is the individual that I contact, made contact with most prevalently as far as the franchise agreement is concerned. So I appreciate your being here this evening. The city did feel the responsibility that, you know, over the years, we get people that call for various reasons about various agreements, including the franchise agreement and such under that. So we wanted to provide them an opportunity. So again, we had 81 comments submitted online. We'll give you those in the records tonight. We had attendance this evening here in person and via internet. So I appreciate everybody that lent, lent comments to us here this evening. And we'll continue to document that and move that forward with you. So, thank you very much. Have a good evening.